Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Today is November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and this is City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Doring, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, President Hu?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Brooks? Alternate Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Miranda?
Present.
Commissioner Quinones?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
Present.
Commissioner K. Seven? Commissioner Watson? Commissioner Whitehurst? Looks like, did Commissioners K. Seven come in? Looks like it.
Looks like it. And Commissioner Watson is here too, right? I didn't hear her.
Is Commissioner Watson here? Oh, she's waiting in the lobby, it looks like.
Okay. This is, alright.
Hi, Doring. I'm present. For some reason, all of my controls for turning my camera on and unmuting.
We see you now. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Doring. Thank you, we're glad. Alright, next one is consider, um, Communications Commissioner, do you have anything to report since our last meeting? I see none, so. Let's move on to consideration of minutes. So Commissioner, after reviewing the draft minutes from November first, do you have any addition, deletion, or correction you wish to bring up for consideration? I see none, so I declared the draft minutes from November first approved. Thank you, everyone. So let's move on to the main item of today's hearing. This is a legislative hearing regarding Washington Square Regional Center Comprehensive Plan Update. And the proposal, as you have read, will create a new section within chapter fifteen of the Tiger Comprehensive Plan. And it will also make some changes to chapter eighteen, dot six, seven, zero of the Tiger Community Development Code. So let me introduce the staff member who are, who is here to present the report. It will be Senior Planner Suzanne Shank. And so she will give us the report. Good evening, Susan.
Good evening, Commissioners and President Hu. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Can you see me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. For some reason, I don't know if Commissioner Watson and I are having the same experience, but it feels like teams maybe did an update and all my controls are missing. So anyway, I think I'm managing and I'm really happy to be here this evening to present to you the Comprehensive Plan Update for the Washington Square Regional Center, as well as some minor Development Code amendments. So this is Land Use Application CPA twenty twenty-one, zero, 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 five, and Development Code Amendment Application, or DCA, two thousand twenty-one, zero, 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 three. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, and please, if someone could let me know that you can see it okay, that would be appreciated. Can somebody, can you guys see my screen?
Nope.
Not yet.
No, not yet. We'll give it a moment. Sometimes there's a lag. Anything?
No.
Let me try that again.
Anything I can access or pop up for you?
Yeah, I just shared my screen again. At least I hit that button. Anything coming up for you all?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, well, Plan B is Tom, if, well, actually, Doring has access to it as well. Doring or Tom, which one of you would prefer to, to go get it and see if your screen sharing is working? Whether you have a preference?
I'm happy to go get it.
It's in the Washington Square Long Range Planning Folder? Under the Legislative Process and the Planning Commission Hearing. I hear Tom clicking away.
Yeah, so, did you say Legislative Adoption Process?
Yes. And then the Planning Commission Hearing, SDC Hearing.
Well, there's two things in there. The one CPA twenty twenty-one, the other one's DC twenty twenty-one, two folders.
It's the CPA.
CPA. Ah, there it is, Planning Commission Hearing. Okay, Staff Report and Attachments?
Yes. Actually, no, no, it's not the Staff Report, it's the Presentation.
I got it, I got it.
Sorry, Tom, you're gonna have to be my slide.
No problem.
Thank you.
Read-only copy.
Are you able to share your screen?
Yeah, I'm there. I'm just juggling the. Oops. It's jumping around a little bit. Hold on.
I just saw myself, so.
Yeah, I was just about to click on the presentation and the screen shifted to something else, and then we got you.
Great.
So.
And if you could do the slideshow version to start from the beginning.
Of course, that's not working, it looks like.
I actually didn't go up to, is, did you go up to slideshow?
I did, there's a button down here.
Okay. Okay.
It's not, as soon as I click it on the slideshow, it disappears.
Sometimes there's a blank screen at the beginning. Try advancing one slide. And sometimes not.
Yeah, it's showing up on my computer screen, but it is not showing up on my ThinkSmart device, so that's when I know it's not. Alright, can you do it? Just, I'll just try to get as big a picture as possible.
Or you could try, there's also a PDF version in the folder as well.
Okay. Do you have a preference?
Just that the PDF might show the full screen.
This is not bad right now with the slides.
Okay, well, that's.
It's big enough for, for me. I can see everything.
Well, great, let's.
You could zoom in a little bit more, Tom. Yeah. Perfect. Does that help?
Is that good for everybody?
Well.
Yeah.
Okay. Now I'll start. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. We almost. I'll let you know when to advance. Okay, so tonight, we're here for this public hearing. It's both a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as well as a Development Code Amendment. But just to be really clear, it's primarily a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That is the majority of the content of the policy that you'll be considering tonight. So next slide, please. So just, uh, if there are folks listening, or if all of you have not been present for all the many briefings that I've given you on this project, just a really brief overview on the project itself that led to this Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So about two years ago, the city received a grant, actually more than two years ago, from Metro to update the land use and transportation framework for the Washington Square Regional Center, or at least the portion that's in Tigard. And in that process, you know, we wanted to be able to identify community needs and priorities. We wanted to look at what the transportation options and improvements could be for this area. We wanted to certainly, basically, kind of facilitate more housing options. This area has a lot of commercial development and not as much housing development as the original twenty-year-old plan wanted to see for this, for this area. We definitely knew that we needed to be responsive to emergent, emerging market trends. Commercial, especially retail uses, have been going through quite a, a challenge lately, not just because of COVID, but before that with e-commerce and all the changes there. And so we wanted to make sure to really understand emerging market trends and where there were opportunities for businesses to, to grow in this area in keeping with the vision that Tigard has for this area. And last but not least, one of the things that we really wanted to achieve in updating the, the policy framework for this area is that it needed to align with the city's strategic vision to be walkable, healthy, and inclusive. Next slide, please. And so like I said, about two years ago, we started this project just as soon as COVID happened. It's, it's been going on this entire time, and I wish that we could be doing this public hearing in person. But not quite yet. Hopefully, I'll, I'll get to see you guys in person someday soon. But as you can see from just this very simple project schedule, we've been kind of marching through the various tasks that we had scoped for this project. We evaluated opportunities, needs, and challenges for the area, as well as existing conditions. We developed some land use and transportation scenarios based on analysis and based on what we were hearing from the community. And then finally, we produced a report, and that was part of your package, although we're not specifically adopting that report this evening. But we are at the stage in this project where we are, we're staff, where I am bringing you these other recommendations from the project to your attention for your consideration and possibly a recommendation to council. So that's where we're at in the project. And the purpose of this hearing is obviously to review the proposed amendments and to consider public testimony, if any, and to ask you to make a recommendation to council. Now, just one thing, I just wanna make sure that it's clear is that there were four attachments in your packet to, that were attached to the staff report. And it was the first two that are up for your consideration for adoption. The final report was also attached. It's still in draft state. We're, we're still taking comment on the final report up until our city council hearing in December. But basically, the final report is kind of the more public-facing document of the project and of the project's recommendation. But certainly, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment section that is before you this evening really reflects everything that's in the final report. It's just a much more policy-oriented, less public-facing document than the final report is. But the final report is primarily, again, a more public-facing document. But what you're being asked to adopt this evening is pretty much a reflection of everything in that document. And then the last thing that was attached to your staff report was some preliminary recommendations, because this is not the end of this project. This is about adopting a new policy framework for this area. But then there will be next steps in terms of implement, implementation of that policy framework. And so that last attachment, it was just to give you a heads-up as for the kinds of things that we'll be coming back with in maybe like six to eight months. It'll be a cap, a package of code amendments, as opposed to a package of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So that's what's on the table for this evening. Next slide, please. So as I was just saying, there are two things that are up for your consideration this evening. The main one being the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a new section of chapter fifteen of our Tigard Comprehensive Plan. So right now, that chapter, chapter fifteen, is actually called Special Planning Areas. And it has one section in it on downtown, and that's it. And so as we were scoping this project many years ago, we felt it was actually important, given the significance of this area being a regional center, that it was appropriate to add another section to this special planning area chapter in the Tigard Comprehensive Plan. So that's what you have before you this evening. And then also part of this legislative hearing is some very minor updates to our Development Code. Chapter eighteen, six, seventy, is called the Washington Square Regional Center Plan District. It's currently the chapter that governs, or that regulates development in the regional center. This is what we'll be updating next, but we're doing these two updates now because they're just needed, and I'll explain those updates later when we get to them. So next slide, please. So I'm just gonna give you a second to digest the slide. There's a lot going on here. It's, I really wanted to present something to, to help the Planning Commission understand, like, kind of what is in this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, this new section of chapter fifteen. So what I'll, I'll just explain this, I'll explain this graphic and, and, uh, but give you some room to think about it as well. So on the left-hand side, those three teal boxes are really showing kind of the framework that we used as we worked through the Washington Square Regional Center Update Project to develop then project recommendations. So there was kind of three key cornerstones to this project. One was, the overarching one was Tigard's strategic vision to be walkable, healthy, and inclusive. Another kind of cornerstone was the technical analysis. We had a large consultant team. They did a lot of technical analysis, as did our city staff as well. And we learned a lot about the regional center. We learned about, about, a lot about emerging market trends, existing market trends, what the market, you know, with support going forward and how the market is changing. And then through all of this, we did a lot of community engagement. And so it's these three things that we really took into consideration collectively as we were, you know, working towards developing project recommendations that would then inform the Comprehensive Plan Update that's before you tonight. So that's on the left-hand side. So those three boxes on the left-hand side are really all about how we came up with the project recommendations, all the thing, the things that went into the project recommendations. And then on the right-hand side, in the kind of more red boxes, you'll see those project recommendations there. They're very much reflected, very graphically, in the final report. And what, and in the Comprehensive Plan Section, they're actually very much reflected, but with words, because that's what the, a policy document needs to be, even though, I mean, I, I guess, I was gonna say I have a preference for the graphics, but actually, I, I really like them both together. But it would be not quite fitting to put the kind of graphics we developed for the final report into our Comprehensive Plan. So we did something that's more in keeping with the kinds of goals and policies we have in our Comprehensive Plan. So the project recommendations are really very much reflected in all of the text that's included in that Comprehensive Plan Amendment document. And then lastly, the thing that kind of also ties them together, that was one of the main goals of this project, is to basically refine, to come up with an updated vision, a land use and transportation vision for this area. So that's what's going on, on the right-hand side, is that the project recommendation and the Comprehensive Plan and the vision very much are all in sync with one another, and they very much came out of all the work, both the community engagement, the technical analysis that was done over the last two years or so. And just one final note about this graphic. Below the Comprehensive Plan box on the right-hand side, in the very bottom corner, there's another box that says Key Findings, Goals, Policies, and Action Measures. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with our Comprehensive Plan. Usually, when we come to you with legislative projects, we're often doing Development Code Updates. Although I think we have done some more Comprehensive Plan Updates recently. I believe Skylar Warren did a Housing Needs Analysis Update. So chapter ten of our Comprehensive Plan was updated through that process. But these are, these bullet points under the Comprehensive Plan are essentially the, the, the main framework how, that's, that, that is represented in each Comprehensive Plan Chapter. So there's always something about key findings, and then there's these broad goal statements, and then a series of policy statements, and then action measures that are really kind of the recommendations for what the city should do next in order to implement the goals and the policies contained in that section. So that is, just to give you a really in-depth overview of, of how important the Comprehensive Plan this section is, and, and how much it contains in terms of how much it really captures from all the work that was done over the last two years, both with staff, with the consultant team, and definitely with the community. So next slide, please. Now, given that this is really the main, the main focus of this legislative hearing is the Comprehensive Plan, I'm, I'm not gonna go into detail with all of the key findings. We've reviewed those in past briefings, and they're also summarized in the final report. I'm also not gonna go through all the policies, because there are many, along with the many, many action measures, but I do wanna touch on the seven goals that make up basically the main content and outline of the Comprehensive Plan Chapter that will kind of set that framework for guiding development in the Washington Square Regional Center going forward. So there are gonna be some graphics on these slides, because I just didn't wanna throw up all text, even though that's what this Comprehensive Plan Amendment is about. It's about all text. But I don't expect you to necessarily be able to, like, read all the graphics. It's, again, just to make that connection with the graphics of the project recommendations that are contained in the final report, so you can see that connection and how they really fed into these goals and policies that were developed for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So the first goal, Goal fifteen dot one, is to develop a coordinated land use and transportation framework. And this is meant to basically support the development of the Washington Square Regional Center into the kind of place that we want it to be, to be really a regional center. And regional centers, given that there are only eight in the region, are really meant to be very urban places. They're meant to be dense, they're meant to be very walkable, and very vibrant, with lots of, you know, a mix of uses, eighteen to twenty-four hour, like, levels of activity. And, and this just really hasn't happened here. So, you know, a lot of these goals and policies and action measures are really designed to help get us there. Also, this goal is about these, the policies and the action measures really need to reflect the market realities here, as well as community needs and aspirations, as well as city goals related to sustainable growth. We wanna do this smartly. And we really wanna have this be reflective of what the community wants to see that's also in keeping with, with the mark, with what the market can actually do. And last time, with the, the, the long-range planning document that created our current Regional Center Plan District and all the regulations that have been governing development, it had very high aspirations for this area. And while we still have high aspirations, we wanted to, you know, update the policy framework for this area so that it was a little bit more achievable than it has been in the past. Next slide, please. So Goal fifteen dot two, it's a very important goal. It's about equity and inclusivity, very much in keeping with the city's strategic plan. We felt that this really needed its own goal to highlight how equity and inclusivity really touch on so many different other goals, that it's not just one thing, that we should actually be considering equity and inclusivity as we consider the transportation network, as we consider housing options, as we consider, like, business development, and as we consider recreation and open space needs of employees and residents in this area. And so there's a whole series of policies and action methods that really take equity and inclusivity into consideration in this area. Next slide, please. Goal fifteen dot three, it's all about transportation, and specifically, active transportation. One of the things that was really clear from the get-go, when we did a pedestrian bike and transit audit, as well as we, as when we started to have community conversations, is that there are some, well, there are many big roads that serve this area. However, the facilities for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for people using transit are not as abundant. They are, there's big gaps in some areas. There are just lack of connection in many areas. It's just really difficult for pedestrians and cyclists to get around in this area, to reach jobs and services and transit and things like that. And it's largely, well, in most part, caused by the very big roads that also, you know, serve this area. So this goal is really about prioritizing those active transportation improvements, which is, active transportation is about facilities for pedestrians and cyclists and transit users. So it's about prioritizing improvements, so we can really balance out the system here and serve both cars, but also serve pedestrians and cyclists and transit users. And again, kind of thinking about that equity lens, that it's, it's really the active transportation facilities. They'll serve those folks, those households that don't have as many resources, perhaps don't have a car, and need to rely on transit or walking or biking to get around. And just one other note on this, I just wanted to highlight that we did a couple of special studies throughout the project, as it became clear that there was community interest or community need. And one of the things that we learned in talking to community is that, you know, people really wanted to be able to get across and to travel along both Greenberg and Hall Boulevard much more easily on foot and bike than they can today. Given that Hall Boulevard is an ODOT facility, Greenberg Road right now is actually a Washington County facility, but we started conversations with Washington County about, well, you know, what if the city actually took over jurisdiction of Greenberg Road? And then we would actually be able to design a street that really, that we felt really met the needs of the whole community, so that basically had a complete set of facilities for pedestrians, cyclists, as well as vehicles. And so that's what you see in the lower left-hand corner, is a study that our consultant did to see how we could fit in better facilities along the whole stretch of Greenberg Road. Because one of the things that's really clear, when you look at any map of Washington Square, is that Greenberg Road really goes right through the middle of it. And we really, really wanna better serve people on both sides of that road. On the, on the west side, which is where a lot of jobs and services and transit are, that's on the kind of the Washington Square Mall side. And on the right-hand side, we have some big employment centers like Lincoln Tower, but we also have a lot of residents, and even more residents coming in along Greenberg. So we really wanna have Greenberg knit this area together, where right now, it serves as a barrier. So that is, you know, one of the main priority, recommendations that's coming out of this project is to prioritize Greenberg Road and to prioritize pet and bike facilities on Greenberg Road. Next slide, please. And then Goal fifteen point four is all about recreation and access to nature. And this becomes especially important when we're talking about a much more urbanized area, because we wanna see more density here. We wanna see more people living here. You know, it's a balancing act, because we can't have, everybody won't have the opportunity to live in a single detached house with their own private yard in this kind of setting. And so to, to create a very livable environment, we need to make sure that we provide enough public open space, access to recreation, as well as access to nature for these folks that are gonna be living and working this area. I mean, already, this area has a lot of development, a lot of employees, and we continue to see many, many more residents as new housing developments happen. So this goal is all about both maximizing what we do have. So this goal is all about both maximizing what we do have as well as increasing access to either what's coming in the future or what we do have. And that's what we learned with this project is that access was pretty critical. There actually are a fair number of either existing or future parks or trails in this area. But it's getting to them that's problematic, especially for people on, on foot or on bike. You know, just on the other side of Hall Boulevard is Metzger Park, but you have to get across Hall Boulevard where there's no light, no pedestrian crossing. On the other side of Highway two seventeen is going to be a lovely future park called Begon Park. But again, Highway two seventeen, major barrier. So if we can actually improve access in this area, this area could easily get to Fanta Creek Trail, as well as several of these new and existing parks that are in the area. Next slide, please. This is goal fifteen point four dot two. So what the other thing that we learned in doing this project is that on the books is an existing recreation loop that that basically kind of used Fanta Creek Trail as one part of the loop on the west-hand side. And then kind of looped around through the Metzger area and then even through the golf course in Beaverton to meet up with Fanta Creek Trail again. And when we investigated whether or not, you know, this was ever going to be likely because it went outside the city's jurisdiction where we don't have control. And, and we learned that other jurisdictions through which this loop would have gone, it was not a priority for them. And so we shared that with the community. And while they understand that kind of, you know, different jurisdictions have different priorities and to actually complete the other loop would have required two new bridges over two seventeen, they really expressed their disappointment at losing a loop. And so the project team investigated a different way, a different kind of loop. And so we ended up coming up with two different kinds of loops that use existing quiet streets, as well as a large portion of the Fanta Creek Trail and the Tigard Heritage Trail. The two loops are not, they're not like drawn as two separate loops on this map. But essentially one, we're calling the Washington Square Loop. And it is basically the big kind of more consistent loop around Washington Square that uses a lot of Fanta Creek Trail, both in Tigard and in Beaverton. And about three miles of it is actually on quiet streets through Tigard, Washington County, and a little bit of Portland. And that's on the right-hand side. But then this other loop, this other smaller loop was really about connecting two schools as well as getting people to Fanta Creek Trail and also downtown where there's going to be a new Universal Plaza. This is a much smaller loop and it's kind of like, I mean, it's, it's definitely a loop, but it's not a nice round circle like the, the Washington Square Loop. But we're calling it the Metzger Fowler Loop because it really does connect Metzger Elementary School to the Fowler Middle School. And if we can kind of overcome the big red circle that's in the middle there, which is essentially kind of the critical gap in the active transportation network for both of these loops. You know, it would improve access to all of the different parks on this map as, as well as the Fanta Creek Trail, as well as to Universal Plaza, as well as these two schools. And if you don't happen to know this, the Metzger Elementary School boundary, those folks that are in that boundary, all of those children actually are in the Fowler Middle School boundary as well. So the, any, any child that goes to Metzger Elementary School, if they are still in the area, when they're ready to go to middle school, they'd be going to Fowler Middle School, which is on the other side of the freeway. And again, that big red gap in the middle just shows you how critical connection. You know, if we, if we can overcome that, like how great that would be for schoolchildren, but other people as well who want to access these recreational facilities. Next slide, please. Goal fifteen point five is all about housing and housing options and housing for people of, of households of all incomes and all sizes. And obviously it's more important than ever today. The region and, and Tigard as well is experiencing some major housing issues, also some houseless issues. And this goal is all about both supporting the development of affordable housing, but also supporting and stabilizing renters in the area. And there are more renters in like kind of overall in this area than there are in the city of Tigard, proportionally speaking. So in this area, generally renters are at about sixty percent. Whereas in the city overall, the number is more about forty percent. So there's a lot of renters in this area and there's, there's policies we can do, there's support we can do. But whether it's like policy support or financial support to help stabilize rental housing in the area. Because even though we want to see change in this area and more densification and, you know, kind of this more urban setting, we also don't want that kind of transformative change to displace existing households. We don't want to price them out of the area. Next slide, please. Goal fifteen point six is all about business and economic development. And this is a combination of, of, you know, recognizing that the regional center is very diverse, commercially speaking. It has, you know, it has very large businesses and Washington Square Mall being one of the largest. So kind of national level businesses, very regional serving businesses. But it also has many like medium-sized, as well as many smaller businesses. And so this goal is all about recognizing that there's such a range of businesses in this area. And we need, they each need that kind of their different kind of policy support. And in some cases, financial support when we're talking about the smaller businesses. So this goal is all about kind of recognizing the full range of commercial activity and businesses that are in this area and supporting all of them, but they all need different kinds of things. Next slide, please. And lastly, goal five fifteen point seven is all about collaboration and coordination. Certainly, I think you're all at least hopefully familiar with the fact that Washington Square Regional Center is not just in Tigard, it's in Beaverton and unincorporated Washington County. So there are many different, there's three jurisdictions involved in this area. Although the portion that's in unincorporated Washington County is within Tigard's urban planning area. And so we need to, you know, kind of plan for that portion of unincorporated Washington County. And that, and that, and as those folks annex that then new, the new policies would apply to them as well. But in addition to these jurisdictions, there are a number of different road authorities in this area. You've got the rail that serves both heavy rail, as well as the West commuter line. You've also got many different service providers. Actually, one more thing about the transportation providers, there's also ODOT. ODOT is, has authority over Hall Boulevard and Highway two seventeen in this area. There's different service providers like the Twalton, Twalton Hills Park and Rec District that serves Beaverton and unincorporated Washington County. So there's just many different players in this area. So it's really important that the city continue to collaborate and coordinate with all the different service providers and agencies and community partners in this area in order to, you know, achieve the vision that we've set out in this comprehensive plan document. So those are the, the seven goals that are, you know, kind of the foundation of the comprehensive plan chapter. And I just wanted to go back to this slide again. Just as a reminder, on the right-hand side, you know, we basically took the project recommendations and we transformed them into the very policy-oriented document that I just did a brief overview of that, you know, is now the comprehensive plan amendment for your consideration. But the, that third piece of the puzzle, the Washington Square Regional Center vision, I also wanted just to highlight and make sure that that was in your minds as well. It's not technically a part of the comprehensive plan document. It's part, it's actually in the Washington Square Regional Center report. But it's something that we hope will live on as a way to capture people's imaginations as well as to help them like kind of see the vision that, that we basically saw in talking with the community and doing this technical work. So if you can go to the next slide, please. We've kind of created both the word version and the graphic version of this vision. And this really came at the very end of the project after we had kind of synthesized all the technical analysis and synthesized everything we'd heard from the community throughout the project. This is the image and the words that really felt to us like really encapsulated the vision here for this area. So I'm not going to read the whole vision. Again, I just, it's not something that you're technically adopting tonight, although we, we do welcome comments on it. It will live on in the final report. We wanted to get it right. But just to point out a couple of key things in the graphic. The graphic basically acknowledges that this is, you know, a very complex area in that it has multiple jurisdictions that are in this area. It has some incredible recreational resources like, and natural resources like Fanta Creek and Ash Creek. But it has a lot of kind of very urban development already in the form of roads, as well as some existing development. And so the vision is about kind of growing up the Washington Square Regional Center in the center, but certainly tapering it down to be compatible with the surrounding areas, both neighborhood areas and other employment areas. But that the whole idea is to, to, to focus that kind of increase in density, that transformative change kind of in the center of the regional center, which is not exclusively the Washington Square Mall, but it's definitely that part of the regional center that's between Highway two seventeen and Hall, and, and sorry, and Greenberg. Center, but they are also barriers if they don't have, you know, complete pedestrian in sight and bicycle facilities on them. And one of the main things that we're proposing as a transportation improvement is to evaluate the feasibility of a new ped bike bridge over Highway two seventeen right around Greenberg. So the idea is to, you know, to have that kind of really central kind of density and urban core served by these roads that are complete streets with bike and ped facilities. But also that, you know, there is a way, an easy way for people to get over these barriers and to connect with the amazing resources and parks that are kind of around this area, like Fanta Creek Trail. We heard that a lot in the open house we did, that people really wanted to connect to Fanta Creek Trail as well as to downtown, as well as to the mall. So that's what that, this vision is, the graphic is trying to capture. And all the words on the right-hand side are trying to capture. One other thing of note to point out is that, you know, the intent is really also to, you know, have this transformation, this kind of dense development occur without pricing out existing communities of color. That, you know, that, that's the thing that we don't want to happen, which has definitely happened across the country in other kinds of situations where you have, you know, gentrification kind of is a bad word. We don't want that to happen here. We want this to be a place that everybody can call home and still provide a lot of great services as well as a lot of employment because that's essentially what a regional center should do. Next slide, please. So pivoting from the comprehensive plan portion of this legislative hearing to the development code portion, this is pretty minor relative to the comprehensive plan summary I just gave you. So the, the two development code amendments that are on the table this evening have to do with kind of a follow-up to the vehicle sales sub-district modification that, that Planning Commission reviewed and City Council approved in the summer of this year. So I think Planning Commission reviewed the sub-district modification in May and City Council approved it in June of 2021. And one of the kind of outstanding issues that all parties agreed to come back and resolve was the concern about the potential impacts that could be caused by a car dealership having a vehicle servicing center as part of their operation. Because a vehicle serving, servicing center is definitely a very auto-oriented type of use. Whereas car sales, even though you're, a car dealership is selling cars, it's not necessarily a whole lot different than selling a couch or a refrigerator. Given that what happened with the sub-district modification in the summer was that we made it really clear that all, if there's any kind of car inventory as part of the car dealership, that all that inventory needed to be inside a building. So kind of with that, that potential impact taken care of, the one thing that was left hanging was, well, what about vehicle service and service centers, which are pretty normal accessory use for a car dealership to have? Staff was definitely concerned that there could be is kind of auto impacts on what we want to become a very pedestrian-oriented environment. And so it was again, agreed to by all parties and City Council-directed staff to come back with essentially some enhanced approval criteria to address the potential impact of a vehicle service center on the pedestrian environment when it's a part of an, you know, an approved and allowed car dealership. So that's the one development code amendment that's on the table tonight. And the other one is honestly just a longstanding. I don't know if it's, it's an oversight, but certainly it has just been a missing link in our code that back in, I think it was 2010, when the city updated, updated its Trails Master Plan. It did a feasibility analysis for the Washington Square Loop Trail. Similar, but different than the one that I showed you this evening. But it determined that the most feasible route was to bring the trail onto Oak Street for this, you know, this one segment between Greenberg and Hall. And since that time, through the development review process, private development has actually built a section of that path.
We just lost your audio, so just be aware, we're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm glad you spoke up. Okay, well, I'm almost almost done, so bear with me, or hopefully the audio will bear with me. So essentially, the Oak Street cross-section with PATH, that particular development code amendment is to codify what we've actually been having developers build on Oak Street. So it's, it's really kind of making up for what should have been there in the first place in, in our code so that we can ensure that the rest of the street is built to the same standard as these new developments have been building it with this multi-use path on the south side. So those are the two development code amendments being proposed this evening. Next slide, please. So community engagement and community input. I'm not going to go into great detail here. There's a lengthy summary in the final report of the extensive community engagement we did over the course of this whole project. Again, I want to thank Commissioner Watson. She served on our stakeholder working group. She can attest to the community engagement. And, you know, we had some great turnout, if you can call it that, with our virtual open house and various other surveys and community interviews. And we really ended up, I think, reaching a lot of people, which was wonderful. Because, you know, COVID has been challenging in that regard. So there was a lot of community engagement that went into developing the project recommendations, which, like I said, fed directly into the comprehensive plan amendment. And then once that final report and the comprehensive plan documents were available online, I sent out a whole series of emails to the various groups that I've been in contact with throughout the project. So right now we have an interested party list of over about 200 people. So they all received an email notification. There's various different community organizations. I've been in touch with different CPO, you know, Washington County Citizen Participate, Participation Organizations that have been made aware and kept apprised of the project's efforts along the way. And, and they were made aware of, you know, the final recommendations that we're presenting this evening. So anyway, suffice it to say, a lot of people got notified that we do, we did have this package of final recommendations and this set of comp plan amendments. We actually didn't get, and I don't know if there's anybody that's going to be testifying this, this evening, but at least. but at least as of, you know, right before this hearing started, I did not have any written testimony. The four bullet points that I've listed here is just like, I didn't really get any official testimony from anybody, but I did hear from housing land advocates. I think you probably heard from them before through different projects, but they're a nonprofit who's very keen on ensuring that cities are meeting their goal 10, their statewide goal 10 housing requirements. And so they're 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 basically watching cities, making sure that they're meeting those goals and advocating and helping cities to meet those goals. And so they've been really pleased with Tigard. And it's it's actually, they've been a great partner to work with. So they reached out and they're very pleased with the recommendations, especially around housing. Bike Portland reached out. They actually, there was one of their correspondents wrote a story just last week about the Washington Square area. And we didn't approach them. They found us and are really pleased about the active transportation, specifically the bike recommendations that we've made in the course of the project. Washington Square Mall also reached out. Perhaps they're listening this evening. They're really keen on on moving ahead with their Sears redevelopment. They're hoping they can get that back on track next year. And they're really glad to to know that the direction that we ultimately well, the direction that that we're going in, the project recommendations really continue to embrace the vision that they have, that they've actually already have approval for for redeveloping the Sears portion of their site. So they're very pleased about that. And then just, I I heard from a couple of committee members unofficially through email and seeing comments on a website, that community members in general, at least the ones that reached out, were also very pleased with the direction that this project is heading. But again, I didn't receive any official testimony either by email or in writing. Next slide, please. So our recommendation to Planning Commission this evening is to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, which is CPA 2021 00005, as well as the development code amendment, which is DCA 2021 0003. And that recommendation would go to the Tigard City Council, which is expected to hear this proposal on December 14. And your decision alternatives, which are on the next slide, are to recommend approval to council with no changes or to recommend approval to council with minor changes and or to continue hearing this hearing to a date certain to consider either public comments or major changes to the proposal. Next slide. And this is just something I showed at the last briefing before this legislative hearing, just to give you a sense of where we're at and where we're headed. We're on the very left hand side of this graphic in 2021. The comprehensive plan amendment is really the policy framework, the land use and transportation policy framework that will then basically kind of set the stage for implementation through later efforts like changing the zoning and updating the development standards, you know, more fully, not just the two that are on the table this evening. So this is what we're hoping to wrap up in 2021 is adoption of this new kind of policy framework into the comprehensive plan. Like I said, it goes to City Council for their consideration in December. And then right after that, we would start looking at policy implementation, which would likely involve rezoning as well as updating the code. And then after that, then it's a whole range of of players. The city making public improvement investments, developers either building new housing or commercial buildings, and the city also either continuing or developing new programs such as business assistance or anti displacement programs. So that's how this all plays out. It doesn't just end here with adoption of a comprehensive plan section. So I just wanted you to understand the the whole picture. And then next slide, please. And that is it from me. I appreciate your attention. I know that was a lengthy presentation. I'm open to questions and and then really interested to hear your deliberations.
Thank you, Susan. Before I ask Commissioner if they have any questions, just want to remind the public that if you want to call in to testify, to provide pub public testimony, please call in at 503-966-4101. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Susan? Commissioner Dick, please go ahead.
Hi, Susan. So I have a question about the comprehensive plan. What is the current unincorporated Washington County Use Code along Hall Boulevard? And the second part is how does it differ from the proposed new code change for the Washington Square Regional Center?
Just so I understand your question, you, did you say comprehensive plan designation? So are you wondering about the, or just kind of more the, what their comprehensive plan says about the Hall Boulevard area?
What their comprehensive plan says about Hall Boulevard and and for the unincorporated areas that aren't yet incorporated into Tigard? What is the difference that we would see on these proposed changes?
So at a policy level, there's probably not a huge difference. I'm just thinking about how I want to frame this. So on the Washington County side of things, they have, we call them plan districts. So we have a plan district for downtown and we have a plan district for the regional center. We have a plan district for Tiger Triangle, kind of these special planning areas. The county has something similar. They have special planning areas. And so they have basically an area plan for this area that they they definitely admit is very out of date. I think the original plan for this area happened back in the 80s. And it's actually when Washington Square Mall was not in the city of Tigard. So there's been a lot of change, specifically change in the properties that are inside the city versus just in unincorporated or in unincorporated Washington County, since the county has done their planning effort. And I I, in the course of this project, we worked very closely with the county. Obviously, they're very interested in this area because it's it's still in their jurisdiction. But they, it's not that I think there's necessarily a big difference between what we're proposing and what they have on the books. It's, but there's a definitely has not been really looked at comprehensively in a long time. And what's probably tells the tale more than anything, if you look at their zoning map, there's like 15 different zones along Hall Boulevard. It's a hodgepodge. And so we're trying to kind of unify different areas, especially just really recognize the Hall Boulevard kind of Main Street node that exists there, has existed there for a long time. We want to acknowledge that and better support that area to thrive as this local neighborhood serving area. Their zoning doesn't necessarily not do that, but it's kind of all over the map and doesn't provide like a clear, consistent direction for moving forward. And like I said, they readily admit that their planning work for this area is very out of date. And they're very pleased to be involved, but the county being as big it is and the priorities they have, like they know they need to go back and update this, their plan for the area that they still have jurisdiction over. But but they, resources, priorities, you know, I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, but they haven't done that in quite some time.
Thank you. So what is the incentive for those sections of unincorporated to incorporate them? That's why I was kind of wondering.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think there are probably some incentives. And I, again, because there's so many different zones in the county along this edge, like so many different zones. I I I couldn't tell you, I mean, you'd literally have to go zone by zone to say explicitly what the incentives were. But I think, A, just it'd be a lot clearer to a a property owner or developer or business owner operated as to like, what would be allowable based on what we're doing than what they have now? Really, like, the zoning is a little bit all over the map and it's not at all intuitive as to what you can do. And even our zoning has some of those issues where you got certain things that are footnoted that we want to elevate and not have be in just a footnote. So we're, we can be guilty of that as well. But incentives will be about like just clarity and direction and hopefully ease of being able to do something different with your property. Because we are going to be a lot more open to the types of uses. Like right now, for example, and this is true in many parts of the regional center, is that certain kinds of businesses, we classify them as kind of more on the industrial side of things, but they might be light industrial. But that might exclude them from being in kind of a neighborhood serving area because that's how they've been classified. But businesses have really changed a lot over, you know, the many, many decades that zoning codes have been in place. And there's now certain kinds of businesses that would be very appropriate in a neighborhood serving area that our zoning code doesn't think of as that in that way. So as we move to updating our zoning code, like, you know, potentially we might allow more kind of small scale light industrial uses and that currently like are not allowed even in our code or probably in the county's code. Things that would really be incompatible in a neighborhood serving area. So we're really, we're modernizing. The county knows they need to modernize. But right now, that's, again, they haven't done it. It's not a priority for them. And so that's another incentive is that people will be able to do more here. And hopefully, we're also going to be incentivizing just with hype bonuses, housing, housing over businesses or affordable housing over businesses as well.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
Hello. In some of our previous briefings, we touched a little bit on jurisdictional transfer of roads. And I noticed that, you know, the comp plan amendment proposed does include mentions of Greenberg, but it doesn't call out Hall. And I was just curious why that is.
Yeah, Hall is complicated. And in fact, you know, even now that you even suggest that, it occurs to me that we probably should have something, a policy in there. Right now, we are, we are in discussions with ODOT about jurisdiction, jurisdictional transfer to Hall, but not this segment of it. And 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 it's unclear when we're going to accomplish, how we're going to accomplish jurisdictional transfer of the portion that's south of this area and goes through downtown. Because Hall is a very long street. All of it is ODOTs now. And the city, at least in terms of how, just like the timing occurred, a lot of it had to do with what was going on in downtown, also with South Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project, that the focus for jurisdictional transfer on Hall was really centered much more to the south. And that it was kind of going to be a much longer range goal to do any kind of jurisdictional transfer to the north. The other thing is, is that even though Hall Boulevard is in the city's boundary, just as it crosses over 217, it actually leaves the city's boundary and enters Washington County like along, as it turns at that at that elbow and then heads over to Cross Shules Ferry and cross 217 again. And so also the complication of the fact that even though that's in our urban planning area, it's not even in our jurisdiction. So it kind of felt too far out to make that a policy. But I, just in your mentioning it, honestly, I wonder if we should just still add something, but kind of clarify that this is a long range and that the city should, you know, just consider like there might be, you know, an opportunity in the future that we just are not imagining now or that something changes in the future that might make it more feasible. So I'm actually, I'll I'll throw that back out to the planning commissioners if 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 folks feel strongly about having like kind of a longer term policy about jurisdictional transfer of Hall Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question that's a little more peripheral to our decision. But I was very curious, the, in the third attachment, one of the stats that caught my attention that I don't remember seeing before was the pretty significant drop in average salaries per job sector in the region. And do we have any idea of what's causing that?
Yeah. And you're you're attesting me because I I I had, used to have that the tip of my tongue when we did that background and existing conditions report, which now is like a year ago. But I, and and this is detailed in that report, so we, I can get you more information. But we actually even checked in with the with the state because we got those, that data from the the state employment department. Obviously, they track it for all of Oregon. And we double checked because we were like, really? That's kind of not what we were expecting. And we had their analysts give us their opinion. And if I recall correctly, the the one factor that they could point to was that there used to be like three very large employers. And we're not talking the mall and we're not talking Lincoln Tower, but like a, like very large employers like over in kind of the Nimbus or Cascade areas. And and they had a fair number, you know, of jobs as well as, you know, like family wage, higher paying jobs. And when those three employers left the area, and I don't think that they were able to really even identify, but like exactly like which employers. But it was like a significant like employer and they just were like a couple of them and they happened to be super large with those kinds of kind of more higher wage jobs. And when they left, the the district never really made up for them. We we never got those kind of employers back. So there still are a lot of jobs and there still are, you know, some fairly decent salaries, but that was the main reason for the drop, if I recall correctly. And certainly I can, I can call up that document for you and and just send you a link so you can dive into a little bit more.
That would be great. I was just, I was curious if there was something, if there's anything else we could do to, you know, if we knew this this little piece of the sector is is missing. Is there something I can do to bring it back?
Yeah, no, I wish it were that easy and unfortunately it's not. And partly it's like kind of where businesses can find to do business that's cheaper. And partly it's like business models are changing. So even like kind of professional offices, even before COVID, they were not finding this area as desirable as they used to. So it's, there's probably a lot of things that kind of factor in the, you know, the decisions that hundreds of employers are making about where to locate. But there was no easy like, oh, if we only just recaptured this, like by doing this, like, because we're really land constrained in this area. It's not like we have a whole bunch of vacant flat land to offer to like an industry. And that would be like the most obvious way to get higher paying jobs and a lot of jobs back in the area.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any questions? Well, I have a quick question, Susan.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that the Washington Square Regional Center is not exempt from any of the nuisance code as in our Title VI of the Tiger Community Development Code. In other words, the dealership service center will still have to obey all the noise limits and
Yes.
orders. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think there's any part of the city that's exempt from that. That's a really great question.
Yeah, I I took a look and I don't see any exemptions, but I just wanted to ask to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Commissioner, before we move on to, oh, Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that Attachment IV was something that was not applicable to our discussion tonight, that we would be able to put public input or questions regarding ECO Northwest specifically about the zone subject, zone sub districts at a later time.
Yes, it was actually for transparency sake, both for the public and other stakeholders that are interested in like the next phase of this project, which is the implementation phase where we will be proposing some rezoning and new development standards in our existing plan district chapter. So because this work really has fed into and will continue to feed into what that future implementation work looks like, we wanted to put down on paper kind of We wanted to put down on paper kind of what direction we were going in so that everybody was just aware of that. But yes, you will definitely have an opportunity at a later date when we formally bring that forward and, and, and draft it out more. It's not quite complete yet. There's still a lot of, well, discussions and community engagement we need to do to finalize all the details. But that's kind of a high level, general direction based on the policy framework that we're proposing this evening.
Okay.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Any more questions for Susan? All right, so for now, let's move on to the public testimony section of the hearing. Good evening, Kylan. Do we have any caller?
Yes, you have one caller and I'll pass them through now.
All right. Hello caller. Please welcome to the public hearing, please clearly state your name and your address. And please spell your last name and please tell us if you are in favor or opposed or neutral to the proposal. And after you have done that, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Alistair Crawford. The third name is spelled C R A W F O R D. I live at eight nine two one Southwest Elena Lane, Tigerd, Oregon, which is pretty close to the mall and I'm in favor of these changes. Should I jump right in?
Please go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, so, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So, so Oregon overall is not constructing enough housing, which is leading to skyrocketing housing costs. And that represents people being priced out of the housing market. And more sadly represents people being forced onto the streets. So I support these changes to allow us to build more housing, to make it legal to build high density housing, a medium density housing around the mall. And yeah, to make a nice walkable area around it as well. It's great. So fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you, oh, did we lose you?
I'm, I'm still here.
Okay, before you go, Commissioner, do you have any questions for the caller? I see none. So thank you so much for calling in. Oh, oh, wait.
I was gonna say, not really a question, just saying thank you. I think we were talking about this last meeting that not really, we don't hear a lot of people coming in and saying they're for an amendment or a change. So thank you for calling in and letting us know that you support it.
No problem. Thank you for hearing me. Bye.
Thank you. Bye bye. Kylan, do we have any more callers?
There are no other callers this time.
Okay, Commissioner, last chance for Susan. Question for Susan. Well, go ahead, Commissioner K seven.
Hi Susan, thank you very much for the presentation. Very nice. This may be a premature question, but I've been itching to ask it. I'll ask it anyway, so. Because the ink may not even have dried up yet on the infrastructure bill. But I'm just curious, are there things we need to do or should be thinking about now to leverage some of the federal funding that's becoming available soon? Maybe not as soon as we wanted, but soon. Are there things we can do to leverage some of that funding, that, that huge bill that got signed today?
That is a very, very current question. Actually, I, I don't know if I have a good answer. I am, I mean, there's so many things that are changing around us. Federal funding being one of them. I know that the city is still trying to even allocate the past funding he got, it got with the ARPA funding, the American Recovery Act funding. And, and actually, can I ask you, because I've been buried in other things, what happened today?
President Biden actually signed the infrastructure bill.
Oh, the infrastructure.
So I thought this is all kind of part of, you know.
Yeah.
Big umbrella. And I was wondering, wow, I wonder if we could get some money out of that one to help. Part of the reason also was I was listening to you, thinking about it, right? Some of these very ambitious projects like this one, which is, which is really wonderful. Things happen and then even though we may have budgeted some amount, you know, growth over time, we call it in my industry. Or as you start implementing it, the budgets kind of blow up, right? That's kind of where my head went, you know, oh, wow, because this infrastructure bill just got approved. By the time they go through all the processes and the funds waterfall, if we have to do something to kind of, you know, put our dips into it now. Maybe we can get funding in case there is a blow to our budget. Where my head went.
I, I like the way that you're thinking. And honestly, I mean, the one response that I have that I feel very confident in saying is that the fact that we've done this planning work. That we've done the community engagement, that we're putting things down on paper, both the policies as well as lines on map. It, it's, it, it sets us up on so many levels to get funding from the state, from the county. I mean, even like with Greenberg Road, you know, things start coming together where we're talking about jurisdictional transfer. And we're talking about getting MSTIP, which is the major street funding that the county does. Getting like Greenberg Road being one of the projects that the county ends up funding with all of, you know, our tax dollars. So this kind of planning work is just critical so that we can actually say that we've, that we've done all the right steps. We've created the policy. We've actually, you know, adopted these things. So we can point to it and point to it, point to it. And just also, so you know, Dave Roth and I, and he's the senior transportation planner that's been working on updating the transportation system plan. Which you're going to be, you know, reviewing in a public hearing very shortly. Like what is reflected in the Washington Square project recommendations with regard to kind of the bigger transportation funding projects are in the TSP. And so, you know, that kind of coordination where we can actually point to these different things and saying like, this is a priority, this is a priority. It just really helps us set up nicely. Even as the city council, as our local decision maker tries to figure out what our priorities are, we can say like, here, look at all the community engagement we did. And people really wanted this. That really helps them to make those really hard decisions because we can never fund it all. So it's all about priorities. So fingers crossed, I, I was involved in a project ages ago, different city, where some infrastructure funding became available. And because we were ready for it, we actually got it. And we got a whole new sewer system because we were just kind of ready for it. So I, it always bodes well when we've done all the planning work because it's, it's, it's hard to play catch up. If money's there, you, you want to say like, we've got a plan. So I think it puts us in a good place. But yeah, it'll take a while for that money to trickle on down.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Any more questions? All right, I see none. So thank you, Susan. Commissioner, it's time to move into the deliberation. No further testimony or questions from the audience allowed. So commissioners, what do you think?
Let's do it. Looks beautiful.
Commissioner, she likes it. Commissioner Roberts.
I feel the same way.
Commissioner Dick.
I think it's a great, great looking plan and I look forward to seeing it.
Tom, you have something to add?
I do. I, I just wanted to comment on your last, your last comment. And just a reminder that this is a legislative hearing. So you actually, it's pretty open. You don't have to cut off public testimony. If we get additional calls, if you want to ask Susan more questions, if you want to ask me questions, not an issue because it's a legislative.
Okay. Thank you. So it's open. It's open for all. Just jumping in, Commissioner Jackson.
So I was just going to mention again that, that I would support it if we also added some sort of a mention of Hall Boulevard jurisdictional transfer at least. I think in the other places, Greenberg is mentioned, it's like pursue jurisdictional transfer. If we said something like investigate jurisdictional transfer of Hall. Or, you know, pursue next steps of jurisdictional transfer, I would, I would be happy to see that, but I would support a motion without that as well. But overall, I, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners that have spoken, but I'm, I'm very much in support of the comp plan and code amendments.
So Commissioner Jackson, if you will want to include a amendment. I, I would appreciate that if you can take the time to write it down in a Microsoft Word document or something and present it on the screen. So we can all be on the same page, if you would like to do that.
So if I were to do that, do I need to like include the specific language I would want in the amended text?
Yes, well, or, or whatever amendment you want to recommend to the city council. So it's easier for the people to make motion and for all the commissioners to see exactly what you are saying. So. It's easier for me to, it's easier for me to say, to, to just read exactly why you write it down than trying to guess what you tried to say.
So can I, if you don't mind, just a little guidance. Yeah, you, you can write down the actual amendment. You don't have to write the language for the, the actual language. You can, your amendment can be to direct staff to prepare language and then describe kind of what you want. And then we'll prepare the language to present to city council if you trust us to get the, the language right based on our discussion.
Okay, thanks. It will take me a minute or two to collect my thoughts, I think.
Oh, no problem. So commissioners, any more comments? So I see who hasn't spoke. Commissioner Watson, what do you think? Maybe she still has a technical issue. Commissioner Shirk, would you like to comment?
Sure, I would like to comment. I remember when COVID first started and we, Susan had the wonderful privilege of having this great big project in front of her as we were going into lockdowns. And she put together a timeline and showed us everything that she had hoped to do. And I remember thinking, man, how is that going to happen? How, how are you going to get all these people and do all these things publicly? And honestly, I was a bit cynical about it going into what we were going into at that time. And to see all the things that have happened and the, all the numerous briefings that we've had, numerous briefings. And that the way that the project has changed along the way, I just think it's really remarkable what, what you have done. And it's, it's just a good example of a, a well-run government project. And like the other commissioners have indicated, I'm, I'm very interested in development in Tigerd, very interested in housing, walkability. And I just think it's very thoughtful. Well, it's not perfect and it's going to have, I'm sure it's going to be argued out with the different projects that are going to come before you and the commission. But I just think it's very well done and kudos. That's my thought. No question.
Thank you. Okay, I see Commissioner Jackson with his amendment proposal modification written down. So that's, that'll be great for whoever is going to make a motion. Yeah, so I echo other commissioners' sentiment and I think these are wonderful goals and reflect our visions. And many of them are lofty, but it's always good to aim high, even though we're going to face lots of challenges. So I will approve, I will approve the recommendation to the city council. Commissioners, any last words before anybody want, or anybody want to make a motion?
So this is a recommendation for approval to the council, correct?
Yes, and adoption of the finding, the staff report. And with, and if you, if you want to include the amendment proposed by Commissioner Jackson, I don't know if you can read the comment section, the comment section.
Yeah, direct staff to prepare language to add recommended actions. And there it goes. It was disappearing on me. Okay. Okay, I'm going to give it a shot. So I move the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of applications. Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 2021 dash zero 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 five. And Development Code Amendment DCA 2021 dash zero 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 three. Hope I have enough zeros there. Adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report and/or based on the testimony received. And including a language to add the recommendation action, the recommended action mender. Measures under goal fifteen dot three and fifteen dot seven. For the purpose of advancing long-term jurisdictional transfer of the sections of Hall Boulevard within the Washington Square Regional Center.
Very good. So I just wanted to confirm with Susan that because Commissioner Jackson put a question mark after fifteen point seven. So is, is both fifteen point three and fifteen point seven correct, Susan? Correct? Okay, good. All right. So, so the Commissioner Robert have put, put, put forth a motion. For the planning commission to forward a recommendation of approval to city council of application CPA 2021 dash five. And DCA 2021 dash three. And adoption of finding contained a staff report and, and on testimony received. With the modification of directing staff to prepare language to add recommendation action measure undergo fifteen point three and fifteen point seven. For the purpose of advancing long-term jurisdictional transfer of the section of the whole Boulevard within the Washington Square Regional Center. Do we have any questions or comments before we move? So anybody want to second? Do we have any second?
K seven, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner K seven. So let's take us, let's take a second if you are in favor. Please raise your hand. I give you, I give you five, okay, I give you ten seconds to, to do that.
Mike, this is Commissioner Watson. Connection is breaking up regularly.
I can see your hands are up, so that's great. And Commissioner Roberts' hands up too. So, all right, so those in favor say aye.
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 So all the commissioners in attendance vote for the motion. All right, so please lower your hand. So I guess I don't have to ask those opposed because it passed unanimously. All right, the motion passed.
Cool.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. So as Susan pointed out, the next step will be the city council would, will have their public hearing on December fourteenth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Very good job.
Yeah, awesome.
All right.
Good evening, commissioners. President who? Other business, I don't want to keep you for too long, but we, again, we, as I had warned last week, we, we have a very busy couple of months and it's going to go right through the holiday period and into January. We have a couple more cases, land use cases quasi judicial that just became complete and the timing is such that we're going to have to try to fit in another meeting in January. And we're also dancing around national holidays and the first Monday being immediately after, well, the first Monday of January is actually the official New Year's holiday day for the city of Tigard. So we're looking at adding an additional hearing on the thirty first of January. And I'm not sure if Doreen's had a chance to talk to you about that or pull you about that. So if you could let Doreen know whether that's an issue or then you won't be able to make it or whether you will be able to make it. And we'll try to, if we can, reduce February down to, it's looking like we can probably just do one hearing in February. And I think it might start to slow down a bit after that. So just a lot of cases, a lot of them are coming, becoming complete around the same time and it starts to jam up schedules. And you know, with those land use cases, we've got a hundred and twenty day window to get everything done that's set by the state. So that includes the city council hearing if it gets appealed. So we have to factor all that in. So just to give you some information on, on why we're so jammed up with the meetings right now. But I appreciate your flexibility and your willingness to do extra meetings in the month. That's, that's, you know, we always appreciate the time you volunteer and even more so when you give us some extra time.
Tom, I'll go ahead and send an email out tomorrow asking about that January thirty first and you guys can just reply and let me know if there's a problem or not.
Okay, thank you, Dory. Yeah, so any questions about that, about the schedule? Most of them are going to be quasi judicial cases, but we do have another legislative hearing, which is the TSP update. So. So that's the schedule. Any, if there's no other questions about that, I did want to mention one thing. I don't want to take too much time on it, but I just wanted to, I feel like I need to let you know that after the last meetings hearing, one of the neighbors who testified and provided information was pretty upset about the decision and contacted me and was actually trying to attempt to contact planning commissioners individually. So I don't think she got a hold of anyone's information, but just a reminder, if you're contacted, be respectful, which I know you will be, but especially a case, a land use case like that, that's already completed. Just, you know, let them know that there's nothing that you can do at this point. The commission made a decision. So, you know, I disagreed with her. I felt you had a good, healthy discussion last week. You know, there were, there was dissension on the commission. It was not a unanimous decision. I thought it was a good deliberation. I thought you all covered the points that were brought up that this person felt didn't get an airing. And I, you know, that was my opinion that you did cover all of those things. And we have got the information to her about if she's still not satisfied with that decision, that she can appeal it to council. So just wanted to let you know in case you did get contacted, you get contacted in the future or you hear about it. So any questions about that or anything related to, to that?
So Tom, is it, it's okay to respond to the individuals like that? Or what's the correct way? Should we just point them towards you or what's the right thing to do?
I would point them towards me. Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't get into debate about the merits of the case or anything like that. That's, you know, that's basically just the commission deliberated, you were heard, we made the decision. Any other questions or issues, refer back to me. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I, you know, I appreciate the comment that one of the commissioners made today thanking the person because, you know, it is so rare that we get people that call in that are pro something, usually against. Margaret Doherty once told me that this is the second most hated job in city government is the planning commission. Yeah, I get it. It's hard to do, you know, hard to get that balance and please everybody. Okay, so that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Dory. If there's anything, if there's nothing else, thank you. All the commissioners, have a good night.
You too. That's a good job. Bye.
Good night.
Bye bye.